Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the July 17th meeting of the county commissioners. And before we begin, I'd like to ask Mr. Lashley if he will do our invocation.
Be glad to. Let's bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we pause at this time to honor you by thanking you for this day and all the many days in our lives. We thank you for this nation. We thank you for our people. We ask you to give us good government, and we ask that same here tonight. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and I guess we don't have any public speakers. Here's the book. Wayman Armstrong.
My name is Wayman Armstrong. I live in Meven, North Carolina. Really hoping I wouldn't go first, but here I am. I'm here basically, and I appreciate you, Mr. Boswell, and you and Ms. Gailey for responding to my emails I sent, because I did send them to everyone. But we've got a bad case of monkey see, monkey do going on in not only this county, but some other counties. It's where people get out, they mow their grass, and they think, "Let's just throw it into the road." Well, there's a couple of things that happen here. One, it's an eyesore, and I don't think we want eyesores in Alamance County. It's too creepy. But if you ride a motorcycle like I do, or a bicycle, and you pull up to a stop sign, and you go to put your foot down on that grass, it's like putting it on ice. And the way I realized that was at the corner of Dodson and Meven Rogers Road where Eastern High School is. They had thrown, which they did again yesterday, and I came to a stop and almost dropped my thousand-pound motorcycle on myself. Couple of things could have happened. It could have been burned, or nobody could have come along for a while. But anyway, there's, I've been trying to research, and the county attorney, I guess, sent me a, Mr. Albright, sent me an email saying this was a DOT matter. Well, in a lot of cases, I think there's a situation where there's laws. We just need to get the laws enforced. And if we can get behind everybody, if I stop and tell somebody, "You can't throw grass in the road," you're gonna have to call the law out, because they're not gonna like me stopping and telling them what to do, and I shouldn't be doing that. But the living law is the one that covers this. I have a copy of it here if anybody'd like a copy. And there's a section in there where it talks, it doesn't say specifically grass clippings, but it's a $200 fine. I'm not wanting to see anybody get a fine, but I say, if you tell them there's a fine, they would probably quit doing it. And what's happening is when people see it, and there are other people doing it, getting away with it, it just continues to happen. So that's my big concern, and I think it's a safety issue. It's a matter of time. I can show you pictures on Facebook where other people have had accidents because of things as this case. But it's time for it to get drawn to a nub. This is my fourth year starting in Alamance County. It's getting worse each summer. So that's where I'm at.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Very good. Thank you.
Do we have copies of what you were?
Yeah, that'd be good. And I know Mike Mills with DOT is emailing you and I on that.
And he will send you something to the State Attorney General and others, and I appreciate y'all forwarding that over. There's a lot to it. I guess it's like a lot of laws. There's a lot of reading.
Yep. Maybe we can actually get some of our newspapers to help us out with that, Ted. All right. We don't have anybody else to speak, so next we have Commissioner responses. Anyone has something to say about that?
I'd just say thank you to Mr. Armstrong for coming out tonight and for bringing the issue to our attention. I really appreciate that.
All right. Next, we need the approval of agenda, but I would like to add one thing that got skipped over last week. Matt Williams is here tonight to bring an incentive company to us for a public hearing. So if we could, I'd like to put him right after our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda, is there anything there that needs to be looked at?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
All righty.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Matt Williams, the president of the Alamance Chamber. And in that role, I work with industrial prospects that are considering Alamance County. We have that case here. And so I'm coming to you tonight to request that you set a date for a public hearing for incentives for a company called Airgas, A-I-R-G-A-S, Airgas, Inc. And would like to request that the date for the public hearing be August the 7th. And all the details about the project will be forthcoming. Certainly, we will have a representative of the company here that night to go over all the details and to answer questions of the public and of yourselves.
Is that a night meeting or a day?
That's a morning meeting.
Morning meeting.
He said night.
The 7th.
7th. He said the 7th.
August 7th.
That's our meeting.
That's a morning meeting.
Yeah. And I would like to inform the Chair, I will be able to be here for that, so I'm not asking that you delay anything or postpone it, but I have, I'll be, I have a class that morning at 8:00. I can't get over there. But you can well conduct business.
I'll make the motion. We accept that.
I second it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much. We'll see you August 7th.
Okay. Very good. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the recommendation from the Graham Planning Board that I pulled last month, because for some reason I didn't, wasn't smart enough to get my applications for the vote, two of them. But after reviewing and talking to city council members, they had actually recommended Justin Moody as, for their ETJ appointment. And with that, I think Justin and Barry are both here, but my recommendation, or I would like to make a motion that we appoint Justin as the ETJ person for the Graham Planning Board as they've asked. Any discussion on that or questions?
Well, I'll second the recommendation. I'll second the motion based on the recommendation of the Graham City Council.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm gonna nominate Barry Hikes.
Okay. I guess we need to vote on the motion in a second.
Yeah, okay.
All right. All in favor of Justin Moody to take that appointment? Say so by aye.
Aye.
Looks like we got four votes on that bill. Anyhow, thank both of you for coming out for that, and also we have the appointment of Justin to the ETJ for the, what's his second? Board of Adjustments. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we follow through with that also.
I had talked to Graham City Council people about this as well, so I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And thank both of you for coming out tonight. Barry, I know you've served there, and appreciate that. I don't know what happened, but we try to kind of work with them and do what we have to. Thank you very much. All right. Recreation and Parks, Brian Baker, if you will come forward, sir.
Brian, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, Commissioners. Have a similar appointment issue for you guys. Tonight, we have two spots on the Recreation and Parks Commission that need to be filled, and it's unusual for us to get more applicants than we have spots, but in this case, we do. We have four applicants and two spots. The, one of the people seeking the appointment is Lee Isley. He's been on the commission, and he's seeking reappointment. And the other three individuals are Mr. Kirk Puckett, Ms. Jocelyn Caleb, and Ms. Penny Hawkins that are also seeking appointment. The Recreation and Parks Commission has considered all the candidates and is recommending the appointment of Mr. Isley and Kirk Puckett to the open positions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Are any of them here?
I don't see them here.
Lee was over.
Lee was at the.
Another thing, yeah. And Lee's been very active on that committee. I know he's helped us get a sign out here for the Hall River Trail and so forth. Been very good to that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Property and liability insurance renewal.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm gonna ask Rhonda Morcall, finance, payroll specialist, to come and present that item for us tonight.
Rhonda, how you doing?
I'm doing well, Mr. Lashley. How are you?
Good.
You know, it's rare that I get up here, right?
That's right.
Special occasion.
Special occasion, that's right. Once a year, I come to see you guys. We have with us tonight Alan Crouch from Hub International, who is our broker. He has brought to us a renewal bid of $537,000 for the entire package. That's with a 3.9% increase, which is pretty phenomenal. We're very pleased with that. I mean, it is an increase, of course, but with everything that county employees have to deal with, you know, the Sheriff's Department, EMS, they have a lot of, a lot of things that go on, and we're pretty pleased with that renewal quote. The increase is due to some additional equipment that we hadn't added. We don't send them an entire list of equipment every year, and this year we did, so they could capture everything, all of our big equipment like at the landfill. So that made it rise just a little bit, and I think it was back in the fall of last year, the sheriff might have gotten four positions, and the law enforcement liability is strictly based on the number.
I thought it was because the sheriff was reckless driving. That's not the reason.
That's right. So the law enforcement liability is based strictly on the number of positions they have, so that's why there's a little bit of an increase there. So we're here tonight to ask for your approval to bind that coverage.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
What is our budget for this?
It is right at the $537. We're about $9,000 over than what I had projected for the budget, but we have that in fund balance if I remember correctly. The property liability fund itself. So we're good with that.
Right. And then there's, is there such a thing for an elected body such as ours as having directors and officers insurance, and is that covered in this?
We actually have a coverage, it's called public official liability, or public entity management liability. Is that correct?
Is that where that is?
That covers all of y'all.
I thought we were probably the excess liability down at the bottom.
No, that public entity is. Anything else?
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bill. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. All right. Brian, infrastructure debt payment for the North Carolina Commerce Park.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you this evening, requesting that you approve us to the county to pay to the cities of Meven and Graham, $272,553.01. Back in May of 2013, Alamance County, Graham, and Meven joined together to do the North Carolina Commerce Park. This is where we just had the big opening for Prescient. The agreement between the three local governments was that we would all share equally in the development costs of the park, the infrastructure, roads, et cetera. So so far, we've had several projects at the North Carolina Commerce Park. This includes Walmart, Prescient, Lidl. So it's been a successful park so far. We're hopeful that it'll continue to draw in new business. Back in, when the park was open, Graham and Meven fronted the county's share of the initial infrastructure cost. The county's share was $2,133,207.11. So Graham and Meven put that money up front for us. The county agreed to pay its share with our one-third share of the Walmart tax revenue. So we didn't put any money up front. We said we would give our third of the property tax revenue from the Walmart project to each of the cities to pay off our debt. So we paid the cities of Meven and Graham $105,110.32 toward this debt last fiscal year. Our current amount that we owe Graham and Meven is $2,028,967.79. That's our current amount that we owe. So the city of Graham during the infrastructure development, the construction, they applied for a golden leaf reimbursement grant to help offset those initial road costs. The grant was awarded this past June, and we got our share, which was this $272,553.01. So we have our share back that we put in originally, and what I'm recommending, this is grant money that came to the county to help us offset our original cost of development. I'm recommending that we give the two cities our share of this grant funding. We give it back to them. That would bring our debt with the two cities down to $1,755,543.78. So this is not general fund money. This is money that has come back to us from a grant that we were fortunate enough to get reimbursed. And what it will do is knock down the amounts we owe the two cities and hopefully make it quicker that we'll be able to keep the Walmart tax revenue. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but I think that this would be a wise use of the money. Go ahead and start paying down as much as we can some of this debt for infrastructure costs.
I agree with you. I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay.
I just have one question. What is the value of one-third of the tax revenue from Walmart?
I think, let's see, Susan, Mike can help me answer that. We paid Meven and Graham $105,110 for 1617.
So I have to. So it'd be roughly, that'd be, so it'd be roughly $300,000 total that we're getting?
I'm not sure that's exactly right. I mean, I would have to look into that and tell you, but I know that's the total amount that we paid them last year.
And the length of this loan, the time to pay back was how long from the original agreement?
Until it's paid off.
Until it's paid off.
Yes, it's no interest, and it's a no-interest loan, and it's until the debt is paid.
Okay. So I mean, this makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And I can get you all the dollar figures that we have paid them so far and what that revenue is, but I don't have that.
Any other questions? Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll look at infrastructure, our accounting facility plan.
All right. So as you well know, we've been talking about putting together some kind of a plan for county government to start looking at our buildings. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, about a need to do so. I'm gonna go over a little bit of general information about county buildings and kind of tell you where we are, and then I've got some recommendations for you to consider tonight that are pretty initial, early-on actions that I think make sense for us to do, even at this point in our facility planning process. So you need to know, we've got 40 buildings, a total of over 500,000 square feet. Average age of our building is 44 years. We have some that are fairly new, and we have some very old buildings too, but they average 44 years old. Of our 40 buildings, just to give you an idea, four are court use. We try to break them out into categories. What are these buildings for? Law enforcement has nine buildings. Parks Department has six. Emergency services, four. Human service buildings, what we qualify as human services, has 10. And general government, excuse me, general government buildings are 10. So I think maybe two, three years ago, we went through with the facilities department and assigned letter grades to each building. This kind of helps us think about what, how healthy is this building? Is it an A building or a B building? So we assigned A, B, C, and D. We didn't have any buildings that we thought were Fs. We probably have one that I'm gonna talk about tonight that I would consider an F at this point. So you can, out of our 40 buildings, 10 we consider A, and 16s are Bs. It's not bad. That's 26 of our 40 buildings are either an A or B. B buildings have some issues, but nothing that would prevent us from using them. C and D buildings are where our real area of concern are, and they make up 14 of our 40 buildings. For all buildings, for all 40 buildings, we have estimated $5.4 million is the capital, is a dollar amount we need to spend in capital scattered among all 40 buildings, right? Of that $5.4 million, the capital dollar needed for C and D buildings is $3.8 million. These are known capital needs. These are problems that we know of right now, today, that we have as an issue.
Over what time period?
This is, we have a CIP of five years.
Okay.
So like this year for the '17, '18 budget, we only budgeted $250,000 for our own capital. So we look at, right now, we're kind of moving on a $250,000 a year.
But the real need over five years is $5.4 million?
Yes, most of our needs currently fall into unassigned years. So we have a five-year capital plan, $250,000. A great number of our needs are down in unassigned. So usually what we do, we'll work through our $250,000 worth this year, unless something breaks that's a bigger priority than what's on the list for Buddy's crew this year. We'll work through our list. If we continue at $250,000, we'll probably never address most of the needs.
We're gonna get behind.
So you can see that 72% of the capital need is in C and D buildings. So just to give, I'm not gonna go through every one of these buildings, but just to give you an idea, these are a list of the A and B buildings, the ones that county staff have gone through and feel like, okay, these are, these are pretty good buildings. Those A buildings are in really good shape. I will say the Parks Office, the Park Admin Office this year is slated to get a new roof and boiler. That will make it an A building. It will be an A building. So you see the list of B buildings there. So we started getting into some of our buildings that we have some more issues with. Now, it's important to note, these are what we qualify as C and D, and this is a staff-level estimation of the quality of these buildings. This is not like a professional level estimation, although I will say our press finding body knows the buildings better than Buddy. And so we have a pretty good idea. But the C buildings, we have two of our C-level buildings that are vacant. Rudd Street, which is down near the EMS base on Rudd Street, back behind the Human Service Center, and the Conodle property that was donated to the county, I think, two, two-plus years ago. And also, we have our, there we have our list of D buildings. We have, we have what we consider five D buildings. South Annex, which was a former clinic down near Snow Camp, that was donated to the county a number of years ago. The Training Center that I'll talk about here in a little bit, it is currently vacant. Elderly Services Building, this is over behind Environmental Health, and it has two tenants. We've gone from three to two, but it is, needs some serious work. The Woody Drive Peak Building, which I'll talk about in just a moment, it is vacant, and Environmental Health, Environmental Health is in pretty, pretty bad shape. So the county manager's office has set a facility plan as a performance management goal for this fiscal year. This is one of the things that we feel like ties into our strategic plan under the accountability and transparency pillar. We think it's important that we have, we have, we need a plan for our properties. Why would we want a plan? Well, we currently have four buildings that are sitting vacant right now. Two of those are very large. They're 30,000 square feet. They're pretty good-sized buildings, similar in size to county office buildings, like having two empty county office buildings sitting out here that we're trying to figure out what to do with. Those C and D buildings I talked to you about, they have $3.8 million worth of repair needs. Well, we've been really reluctant to make repairs to those buildings because we didn't know if it's ones that we want to keep, we want to look at doing something different with or getting rid of. We do a plan, and if any C and D buildings make it through the plan, we know, okay, it is worthwhile to put money into those buildings. We want to be able to plan for counties, our future facility needs and locations. You know, if you think about county government, we've got two campuses, downtown Graham and East Park. So we're gonna try to think during this planning process, if we were to, does that make sense, to have two campuses? If we were gonna develop anything else, where would that possibly go? Guidance for new repair needs, so as those C and D buildings start having more and more problems, if they're on the list, we'll consider fixing them. If they're not on the planned list, we wouldn't fix them. As well as building acquisitions, now you guys, the Commissioners are aware that we often have people come to the county wanting to donate a property. If we have a plan and the proposed donation isn't in our plan, we wouldn't want to take that property. So it's wise to have a plan at some point. We also want to use this planning process to clarify what organizations Alamance County will house. You know, we house county government. We also house a number of nonprofits. We also house a lot of state government. And state government, it's hard for us to plan for how we house state government because they, they don't come here to ask you to grow. They grow based on what Raleigh tells them. So we'll get a notice from them saying, "I need eight additional offices" because the state of North Carolina has decided it's time for them to grow. So we want to make sure we're all on the same page. Who do we house in our buildings? And we have a little over $3.6 million left from the sale of the Peak Main Street property, the deal we did, where we sold the Woody Drive property and the North Main Street property. It was for $3.9 million. We had to spend $250,000 of that to just make the move to get everybody out of College Street. We had to do some work at Court Services and some other buildings. So we have $3.6 million left from that sale. That is fund balance. We'll make sure that's very clear to the board. That money is in fund balance and is part of our 22% calculation, but it's designated right now for possible building needs. If we want to use it or do anything with it, we need to make a decision. Do we leave it designated, or do we not? A plan will help us. Thank you, Bob. We did begin planning work in 2015 after the sale of the North Main Street site. So once, you know, the North Main Street site, I'm talking about the Graham Manor property, once we sold the Graham Manor property, that had kind of been the thought process that that might be where county government might do something one day. Once that was sold, we had to start thinking a little bit more about what else might we do. So we have some planning efforts in hand already. But really, the pressing capital needs that the C and D buildings have, and these four vacant buildings that we have that are fairly large, they've kind of put us at a point where we need to make a plan. We need to have some kind of solution. So tonight, I'm gonna make a, I've got a slide here at the very end where I'll make some recommendations to you. But as we've been talking about what to do about our buildings, we kind of feel like that these two first steps seem to make sense very early on in our process. We need to address two of our vacant D-rated buildings. That would be the Woody Drive Peak Building that's over off the interstate in Graham, and what we have titled the HSC Training Center. Talk quickly about the HSC Training Center first. Building's located on Graham-Hookdale Road. Now, you're familiar with the Human Service Center, the Old County Hospital. This building is a 2,000-square-foot building that sits on Graham-Hookdale Road almost directly across from the Conodle Clinic. It's in, it's in front of the building there. You may not notice it. But it's 1,900 square feet. Right now, we have estimated that building needs $146,000 in capital needs. We have shuttered that building for at least two years. It may have been longer than that, but it is so rife with mold, the dangerous kind of mold, that we can't put people in the building. It also needs asbestos remediation, some significant repairs. We haven't been using it for a couple of years. It's, it's time to make a decision about what to do with it. Our estimates are, well, it'll run about $28,000 to demolish the building. That's what I would, I would suggest that we do to this point.
Brian, could you explain where that building is again?
Yes.
I'm not sure if I, I thought this was the building behind the hospital that used to be the cancer center.
No, that's another one of our vacant buildings, but this one, if you look at the map here, I know this is, we didn't really have a good aerial. So there's Graham-Hookdale Road and Vaughn Road, the intersection.
Which way's north?
So this is Graham-Hookdale Road, the one north. This is north. There's Vaughn Road coming in. This is the Conodle Building. This is East Lawn Elementary and McKinney Street. So right here, under these trees, is the Human Service Training Center. So there's a parking lot there on the corner of McKinney and Graham-Hookdale Road. A lot of times, we'll use it when we're going for meetings over to Human Service Center. So this building sits, sits right here. It's under the trees. It's not a tree.
Was fire marshal in there at one time?
We used to use it for, we had computers set up in this building, and we did training for county employees in there. You could go in. It was a bank of computers. You did training. I'm not sure what it was before that. It's been a couple of years since it's been used for anything. Again, this just gives you an idea. I don't have a closer view of it. Does that help you?
Yes.
Okay. So the second building that I'm gonna make a recommendation for here in just a moment is the building over off of Woody Drive, the Peak Resil- here in just a moment, is the building over off of Woody Drive, the Peak Resources Building. There's the address, seven seventy-nine Woody Drive. This is right there beside the hotel off of Highway fifty-four. Uh, thirty-two thousand plus square feet. The county acquired this building as part of, uh, a three point nine million dollar sale I was talking about, where we sold that property and the Graham Manor, North Graham, uh, North Main Street property, and we wound up, uh, getting the ownership of this property back, given back to the county. This was a former assisted living facility, it's a Peak Resources, that's now located on North Graham-Huckdale Road. Uh, so back in 2015, in February of 2015, we had the building that is still at seven seventy-nine Woody Drive reviewed by, uh, firm R and D Associates, Ralph Nicholson and DeLuca. Uh, we had them look at this in February 2015 to give us an idea of, you know, what, what could this building really be used for? What, what was its actual condition? Their recommendation at the time was, it could be used as short-term space for staff relocations. You know, at that time, we were trying to figure out what to do with the street, uh, the folks from College Street. We had several nonprofits we were looking at possibly having to relocate. R and D said, for short-term use, this might be a good place, but, uh, major renovations would not be cost-effective. This was in the opinion of the architect engineer. The long-term capital needs, according to R and D's report, and from what we have seen over the past couple of months, uh, the building would need significant, uh, electrical work, roof replacement, we need mechanical work, we have some significant plumbing issues, uh, and the exterior skin of the building is almost all window, um, 'cause these were the windows in the rooms for the, for the residents. Uh, all of that would have to be replaced. It would need some significant work, serious investment, uh, to, to actually make long-term use of it. County's been operating this building as of April 2017. It's been vacant. We've kept it vacant. We're averaging thirty-five hundred dollars a month in power and water and gas over there, and that's empty. Uh, we have, at this time, cut off all the utilities, I believe, to the building.
The humidity shut all the utilities off. The water's shut off now to the building because of the leaks.
Yes.
It was slanting.
Yeah, the water leaks are pretty significant, so we've cut that off already. So, uh, we're, we're shutting down all the utilities. So we had a recent appraisal done for the building and, uh, for the property. The property came in at ninety-five thousand dollars per acre as a vacant lot, okay? So I, and I'm gonna show you a survey and go around information in a little bit. Um, we currently have an offer in hand to purchase the property as-is for one hundred thousand dollars. Talk to you a little bit about that, too. And, uh, we estimate demolition costs. This includes abatement for asbestos that may be on the property. We're not a hundred percent sure. We believe demolition today would cost approximately one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So here is a, uh, recent survey of the property. Uh, so I- I- five forty is up here. This is the property, it's, it's six point three-one acres. We did have a piece surveyed out. Uh, County Attorney Mr. Albright has worked, uh, with proprietors back for some time, and had, this is a sign, this is a billboard sign that's on eighty-five forty, that we receive revenue from every month. So, uh, Mr. Albright has worked to have this piece surveyed out of the rest of the property. The county's going to retain the ownership of just this piece. So that does take the total property acreage down to six point three-one acres. And what you see here is a floor plan of the building that's there now. Uh, and this was assisted living, so you've got four different hallways. These, these rooms are all rooms where residents lived. Each one, each one, if not all of them, almost all of them, have their own restroom, windows, uh, it would be a little difficult to, to convert this over to office space use. It would take some, besides the work that needs to be done to the building in general for its, uh, operating systems, it would, it would really be, uh, an effort to convert this over to offices. But this gives you an idea of how the, how the building lays out here. Oops. So at this time, we do not have any county use planned or foreseen for this building or for this property. Uh, we have, since, uh, the county has become owner of the property, we have met with some nonprofits, we have talked to some folks about some possible use. There, there have been some very worthy ideas floated. I think the issue has always been the funding. Funding needed to update this building to make it really last, uh, from, from where it is now. So the nonprofits we've talked to have some good ideas. Uh, I think it would be difficult for them to come up with funding, and it would be very difficult for the county to come up with funding to fix it and then turn it over to a nonprofit. Uh, utilities have been and are being disconnected due to cost. And what I would suggest to the board is that the county is gonna hold this property for the long term, perhaps to wait for a market or a good price. The best way to do that is without the building. Uh, you know, right now with the building there, even vacant, does make it a little bit difficult for us to just hold it indefinitely to wait for a, a good offer.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Clyde, when you talked to us back at that time, you said, I recall, you said that they were gonna tear it down at their expense.
That's correct. That was the original deal.
What happened to that?
The manager took a look at it. We realized when we tore it down, when they tore down the Sammy Epps Building, they'd have to have a place for the veterans, folks, planning for building inspections, for mapping, and there was one other. But anyway, he had the architect go over to take a look at the Peak Building, and he just put three hundred thousand dollars in the air conditioning and roof over there at Peak, and the, uh, analysis of that was that it would be three- to five-year life on that building. So, permitted determination, it would be a good swing space for county employees to park people and maybe some more property.
How many people were involved?
I asked Brian this. How many?
How many people were involved in the supposed transfer movement? Twenty people?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, that was done after we left, I think, and I'm not saying it would've been stopped, but I can't comprehend that the decision was made to keep that building without an approval of the board.
I cannot imagine.
Now, I was, I was told that the reason that they did it was, it was in the paperwork that the county manager, which was not Brian, Mr. Honeycutt, uh, was able to carry out the transactions of, of the deal. Now, to me, simple paperwork versus a major decision of keeping that is not, is not a good business decision, in my opinion. I, I can't comprehend that.
I cannot either.
That, uh, we gave up a chance for them to tear it down. And as far as I can tell, uh, there, there was no monetary consideration. You know, I've asked this question. If it's gonna take a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to tear it down, it would've cost them a hundred-and-fifty thousand, you would've said. Why didn't they give us another hundred thousand dollars because they weren't gonna have to tear it down?
Well, the deal changed. I believe Mr. Manning did some, uh, a present value analysis of that, and he made, they may, I'll have to go back and look at his paperwork, but he gave a report to the board where that might've increased the, the money to us. We got a lump sum payment.
Yeah.
We were gonna get paid over a period of time. We were gonna lease the building, we were gonna give it back to them. It's a complex, it was a complex transaction, because we had to transfer the building to Peak, so he could transfer the beds. And then, Peak was gonna give us the building back. Original deal was, he was gonna tear the existing structure down and then give us the land back. But with these other changes that came up, uh, the manager came to see me right after the report from the architect and said we need to change this contract.
But the board's not addressed, as far as you know?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what conversations the manager had with the board chairs. Mr. Smith was the board chair at the time.
Oh, Smith was? Okay, Smith was chair.
I think so.
But Honeycutt was manager, right?
That's correct. Yes. It's 2014, I believe.
Paying for it now.
Yeah. That was a bad call. I don't know who done that, but that was a bad call.
So, uh, we, we are, since we have been made aware, there may be some grant funding that would help, uh, offset the cost of the demolition. Uh, I'm not, uh, this is coming very, very new. Uh, it's possible there would be some grant funding if you take county-owned, government-owned property that you're gonna return to commercial use, put back on the private market. Uh, we're gonna look into that and see if that might be something that we could, uh, pursue to help offset that hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar cost. Also, we've had discussions with, uh, Fire Marshal's Office, uh, Grand Fire Department about the possibility of their being able to do some fire training at the building that may help. Uh, one, it would help the fire departments. I think there's been some interest from the state, uh, in doing some arson training. They don't get this opportunity very often, and it also may help us offset demo costs. So we're gonna be looking into those things. Um, and I'm gonna make a recommendation to you specific here in just a moment, so I'll, if you need any of this information, I'll go back over it. But I, uh, kinda reached the end of the Peak, Peak information. The, the second step that I'd like to talk about tonight, so it, it's tied to the Peak, uh, property, uh, deal. When we sold the North Main Street property, we had the departments that Mr. Sutton was talking about in the building there on College Street that was, uh, later torn down. Planning and inspections were the two major departments there. Uh, they were relocated from the College Street-North Main Street property to a modular building over on Graham-Huckdale Road, uh, sits right there beside P A Y C, right there near, um, Blue Module. This was a temporary move that has turned into a couple of years now. It wasn't the long-term solution, but, uh, it's kinda turned into that now. Uh, we have some staff space issues. Those folks were pretty packed into that building, and it has, it has created parking issues at Graham-Huckdale Road. We brought planning and inspections, employees, their fleet, their visitors, on top of, uh, the Ag Department has, you know, y'all know they have numerous, uh, programs throughout the week where they bring master gardeners in large groups in for the Ag building. So we've, we've had to kinda juggle, how do we park people over there? So, in the meantime, just recently, we've had a significant amount of space opened up at the Court Services Building, which is a building located diagonally from the county office building here on Elm Street. We had a nonprofit that took up half of that building, has gone away. They're no longer, they're down to one person, so we've relocated that one person. Uh, so the, a good, significant chunk of the Court Services Building has opened up. Planning and inspections have looked at this space. Believe it would be feasible for them to be relocated, uh, over to the Court Services Building. Uh, we have costs for that relocation. We would be taking that out of the maintenance budget. We do not have a firm idea of what that may be. We don't think it would be dramatic changes to the building, but anytime you move twenty employees, there's gonna be some cost. But, uh, we don't need any money from anywhere else. We have that in the, in the maintenance budget now. Uh, it would also allow us, and what we would talk with ACTA about doing, ACTA is one of the tenants that's into Elderly Services Building. This is one of our D buildings, one of our poorer-shaped buildings. We would move ACTA if, if it would work, and I believe it would, from Elderly Services into the modular building. They would, they're still on the same site, just around the corner. They would be able to park their vehicles just as they do now, but it would be better spaced than what they do. So this is a summary of the action that I would like to suggest that the board consider. I'd like you to, for you to consider approving up to twenty-eight thousand dollars for the demolition of the HSC Training Center. This is the one over on Graham-Huckdale Road. Those funds would come from the designated funds from the sale of Woody Drive. We have, uh, three point six million dollars left right now. This is fund balance. It is fund balance. I'll make sure that's clear. But I would suggest that we take twenty-eight thousand out and tear that building down. I would suggest that the board reject the offer by B and W a trailer. We, as I said, we have an offer in hand right now for a hundred thousand dollars to purchase the Peak Woody Drive site. I would suggest that you vote to reject that offer. I would also suggest that you, uh, allow the county, allow us to post the Woody Drive property for sale for the next ninety days for four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This is the appraised value of the property with the building standing. So it's ninety-five thousand dollars an acre. The appraiser suggested that we take a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars off of that, because the, of the building is there. So that, that would be a fair consideration. Put the, put the property up for sale for four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars tomorrow. Let it run for ninety days. In those ninety days, we will look into this grant that I just talked to you about, but could that possibly be used for demo? We'll work with Fire Marshal's Office to see, uh, how feasible it really would be to do some controlled burns in this building to lessen the cost. We would also be looking at putting out bids for the demo. We'd be doing all these things in the background while the building's sitting there for ninety days for sale. If the building does not sell in ninety days, I will come back to the board, tell you it has not sold, request then that you, that you approve up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from those same funds. At that time, we would demolish the building, and then we can, we would, I would suggest you put the building up for sale for five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is the appraised value with the building gone. Uh, and at that point, commissioners, uh, we can sit on this property as long as you care to. As long as the building's gone, we're just mowing the property. You may get, you may get a price that comes in sometime, less than five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. You don't wanna sell. The building's gone, we can reject that offer and just wait for as long as you would like. Um, I'm also asking, not for approval, it doesn't technically take approval, but I would like to make sure there is a consensus for the, from the board about the relocation of planning and inspections from Graham-Huckdale Road to, uh, the Court Services Building here in Graham. This time, if you need me to go back over any of these slides, I'd be happy to, or if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer those, too.
Are you, again, I might've missed it, but are you saying that with the building gone, it only appraised for how much?
Five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Appraisal of a mill, a million or a million? How many acres is it?
Six, it's six point three-one acres after we've surveyed out the, uh, the sign. But the sign was maybe half an acre, I believe, about half.
Yes.
I thought we had an appraisal much higher than that, with just a lot of the land.
This one, we just had the, we just had this appraisal done, uh, very recently. I've got it with me tonight, but I don't have the date. But I mean, this was within...
In April, I believe.
You would think with the interstate availability that it has, it would go for a premium price.
Well, the, the, what I would say, if you don't like the appraised prices to, uh...
Take that.
Absolutely not. If, if you feel, now, you don't have to put it up for sale for ninety days at that price. My, I was suggesting that, because in that interim, it'll take us that long to get everything together to demo. But if you don't want to put it up for sale, and you want us to just go ahead and go through the, uh, procedure of getting it ready to demolish, you could, you could approve tonight the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, we'll demo it, and then you sit on it as long as you want to. My only concern is, I don't want the county to sit on it for a very long time with just a vacant building there, 'cause it is continuing to go...
I'd rather not. I'd rather keep the property without the building.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
And then we'll, yeah, we'll have other offers or other opportunities for sale.
And it doesn't say you didn't put it out there for five ninety-nine.
Yeah, you, if you, uh, you don't have to put it out there for a, with a price, I wouldn't think. You can just let it be known. You're interested in taking offers on the property.
How many acres is the hotel lot? Do you know? Do we have any idea?
I do not. I'm sorry. But it's, it's similar, yes.
Yeah. You'd already have a buyer.
Be nice for that to be tax-generating property.
It'd be hard for me to believe another hotel came in and wanted to put a hotel outside that other hotel, which they do all the time.
Right.
They wouldn't think that property's worth more than five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think you're right, Tim.
Well, the city of Graham had, uh, sent us a letter back some time ago, interested in our, encouraging us to put it back on the tax rolls. Uh, so they would be interested in that. I think they were very pleased with the Peak Resources property that was built on Graham-Huckdale Road. I, that was, uh, several millions on, maybe upwards of ten, I don't remember. So if, if you, if you, I put, that's an option for you to consider. Try to sell it right now with the building on it. You avoid the up-to-possibly hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar demo cost. Someone may buy it, but you're also taking the risk that it may sell for much less than you could get if it were gone and we were just patient. That, that, that could be a, a reasonable move, too. If you go the patient waiting mode, I would suggest that you approve tonight using up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand. We'll go ahead and start the motions to demo it. We won't list it at all until it's demolished.
Okay, I need to make sure I understand something. If you offer it for five ninety-nine, four-fifty, ninety days, if somebody comes along with five ninety-nine, four-fifty, we'd have to take it, right?
No.
Why not?
It's up to the board if you advertise your offer.
It's always up to us.
The statute.
That's dirty pool. Uh, nah, I, I wanna keep the land myself, with the building gone.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's where you go make your money.
We need to tear that down, keep the land.
I think so, yeah. I mean, you're giving the property away, four hundred thousand dollars.
We don't wanna give it away.
You're just simply giving it away.
The only thing you're avoiding is the demo cost at that point.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll support the demo cost, but I wanna keep the lot, for now.
For now, yeah.
So, is what I'm hearing then, that the, it sounds like the board is interested in the twenty-eight thousand for the demo of the Training Center and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the demo of Woody Drive?
That makes sense.
Uh, we can revisit when you want to put it up for sale, but we'll, we'll demolish it.
Once, once the property's clean, it's easier for a buyer to say, we wanna move now, which a lot of them like to move quickly.
So you would also be in favor of rejecting the offer to purchase for a hundred thousand?
Yes.
I think I would give it.
I don't know that I would even told us about it. We must.
Well, he, he had it, so he had it.
Yes.
That's what I forget.
Well, I'd be willing to make the motion, just to make sure I reflect what we don't want, uh, that we, um, start the motions of demolishing the building and not list it for sale at this time.
Until it's demolished.
And, and, yeah, until after it's demolished and we can revisit it.
Yeah.
And then, um, we reject the hundred thousand dollar offer.
Yes.
Is that all we need for?
Oh, are you, uh, the HSC Training?
Well, I'll include that in my, I'll include that in my motion, too, to demolish that. And if it's appropriate, I'll go ahead and include the, uh, moving of the, uh, folks that are in the blue trailer or to the Court Services Building.
And we are approving the, up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the designated funds for demolishing.
For demolition, yes.
On the Woody Drive. on the Woody Drive property and then the $28,000 for the HSC.
Yes, thank you. That's included in my motion.
So, that'll cut your headache now, right there, if it's gone.
Yeah.
I know this is after, what's to the, let's see, the other side of the lot? In other words, you got the hotel on one side, you got the rest home in the middle. What's on the far side? It's an industry, isn't it?
It's the trailer.
That's the, uh, gentleman.
SCI building or what?
Used to be SCI, that's correct.
That's a great location.
He wants that lot because it's there on the road.
That's a great location.
Mm-hmm, that's nice.
Pays fair price, he can get it, that's right.
Commissioner, I want to make sure I'm, I'm very clear on this, too, because I know this, this was a lot of action. You're, you're, you're voting on demolishing the Woody Drive Peak building and using up to $150,000 of designated funds to do so, to reject the $100,000 offer from the trailer folks for the Woody Drive property. You're voting to approve $28,000 from the designated funds from the sale of the Main Street Woody Drive properties to demolish HSC Training Center, and you're also voting to move planning and inspections to Court Services.
Yes, that's my motion.
Thank you.
That's your motion. Okay. I'll second that.
I've already seconded it.
You didn't done it? Okay, well, good. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. We did what the county manager recommended there. County manager report.
Well, I do have, I have one item for your consideration. So, we have the World Trade Center Memorial. Just give you an update and also get your thoughts. The World Trade Center Memorial, it toured, it went around the county, it visited several law enforcement agencies, fire departments, stayed for a while at EMS, stayed for a while at CCOM, well-received everywhere. It was very moving to go out and meet with these folks, and they, everybody appreciated the opportunity for it to come and visit their specific department. Currently, it is in the lobby at the County Office Building, right downstairs. Now, back when we developed the memorial, we talked about different places the World Trade Center Memorial could go. We offered a vote out to the general public to give us some ideas. Two top places were County Office Building and Historic Courthouse. Only three votes separated those two. I will tell you that it has been well-received here at the County Office Building. I would suggest that the board consider allowing us to leave it here. You know, I, we've talked about both places. We've talked about the Historic Courthouse. To me, this seems like a good place. If you agree, we can leave it here. I don't think this necessarily needs a vote, but if, if there's a consensus, we will go ahead and start getting some signage, some nice signs that explain the monument, where it came from, what it's about, and then on September 11th of this year, we'll have a little ceremony for it there in the County Office Building. And it can be relocated if it needs to. We can take it up to Historic.
Very good.
Is that acceptable to the board?
I'm okay with it, yep.
Okay. Great, that's all.
All right. Any commissioner comments?
I'd like to say something. I see that we have Rick Rutan in, in our audience tonight from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare. He's the executive for the five county area, which includes Alamance, Caswell, Orange Person, and Chatham Counties. And as you know that when Cardinal Healthcare Innovations became the managed care organization and local management entity for mental health, in, in our area, it was really for Alamance and Caswell Counties. And then there also were the, the MCO LME for the Orange Person and Chatham Counties as well. Well, in the Cardinal system, they really tried to consolidate more, well, let me back up. In each one of these areas, there's a Community Operations Board. It's more of an advisory board, but each COB has an appointed county commissioner on it, and it's to sort of hold, to make sure there's good communication between the community and Cardinal Innovations. And, and sort of hold them accountable, make sure that, you know, we're being served appropriately and it's in addition to just enhancing communications. Well, we, the, the two boards, the Community Operations Board from Orange Person County and the board from Alamance, Caswell, at the suggestion of the hierarchy of Cardinal Innovations, decided that we would consolidate our boards, and I wanted to let this board know that that's happened, and we're doing it on a one-year trial basis. And I think that the main, if there's, if there's a concern, the concern would be to make sure that we're not watering down the, the amount of accountability or the amount of input that we have as Alamance County into the mental health services that are being provided here. We've had two meetings as a combined board, and frankly, I think that it's actually probably better because we have more counties involved to see what each other's doing, to see how services are being provided, to see how the maintenance and effort funding is being spent, because each of us are doing it a little bit different way, a little bit different way. But to me, it's helpful to having those other four commissioners in the room, and they're receiving their ideas about quality of service and comparing notes, and they provide good comparative data that we can benchmark off of each other. So, we're, we're trying this for a year, and I just want to let you know and see if you have any comments about that. And after a year.
Let me ask, Clyde, is that legal? What they're doing, is that legal? I don't think it is. They don't have that choice to make decisions.
I haven't, I haven't looked at that at some time.
For this county.
Well, we were already at a combined county with Caswell, wasn't it?
Yeah, but not Orange County. I don't think that's a good deal.
I can check.
That's not a good deal for Alamance County.
So, I think what it comes down to is what the, the legal basis or what the legal requirement is to have a, for having a Community Operations Board to begin with. And Rick, maybe you can comment.
Yes, statutory, there's supposed to be a board of directors, and we have maintained the local boards just to get that local input, as you said, and to give some more oversight of what we're doing locally.
But that board of directors you're talking about is the governing body of.
Correct, correct. I believe that's what you see. It's already put in there, and that's the board of directors. That's what we're statutory.
So, that's the governing body. So, we're not really a governing body. We're an advisory, kind of an advisory group. And we still have the same representatives from Alamance County. So, we have the, the CFAC, the Community and Family.
Consumer and Family Advisory.
Consumer and Family Advisory Council. Same representation there, same, same commissioner. It's just, we're all just meeting together, essentially, is what it is.
Yes.
And all the, all the data that they're giving us about the services that are being provided is county-specific. It's not all rolled up in one.
Yeah, that, my intent is to give as much local data to every one of those five counties as possible, just so you can get insight into what's going into your county.
I don't think it's legal.
I'll get to that.
Check on that.
All right, thank you.
Very good. All right, any other comments? I'm trying to maybe act out of line, a little bit, a little nosy, but you three or four there, is there, are you in? Yes.
I'll be glad.
Please, I'm just curious as to what they saw fitted in coming here tonight, and they're welcome.
Well, this is a hot ticket, actually.
Yeah.
So, what you have in front of you, or who you have in front of you are our 2017, 2018 Elon Alamance Health Partners, which is a postgraduate fellow program that the Health Department, the hospital, and Elon University have as a partnership together. And so, each one of these ladies, and there's also one other person who's not with us today, Elise, who are placed in one of the health service agencies in our county. One for the Health Department, one for the hospital, one for Impact Alamance, and one for Healthy Alamance. And then I'll let them introduce themselves to you.
My name's Chloe Donahue, and I'm working at Health Department with Stacy.
My name's Mary Hayward, and I work at Alamance Regional.
I'm Ashdi Shumala, and I'm at Impact Alamance.
We're glad you all are here.
Thank you all for coming. All right, no more comments. At this time, I would like to move that we can now go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A3, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the county attorney and the board and receive a report regarding claims made in the cases in Manning versus Alamance County and Randelman versus Alamance County Sheriff. And I ask for a second.
Second, please.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we will go into closed session.
See Bruce?